The Monday, May 19th, 2014, meeting and public hearing of the Falls Church City Planning Commission is now in order. Ms. G., would you please call the roll? Mr. John?
Present.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Ms. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Currently, Mr. Meeks and Mr. Wodisca are absent. All right, we'll move on to adoption of the agenda. Could I have a motion to adopt this agenda as presented?
I so move.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Good, the motion is adopted. I know we do have a petition here, but I think it's for something that's on the agenda, so I'll hold that. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda? Seeing no takers, we'll move on to old business. We have no old business today, but we do have new business. And our first order of new business is Mobility for All Modes Comprehensive Plan Transportation Chapter Update. Mr. Stoddard is here to give us an update on things that have changed, but we've all seen this several times. And so, I'm just going to -- he's not going to go through a full slide presentation if there's no objection.
There are no objections.
No objections?
No doubt.
Okay, we've seen it, a lot of it. I did kind of go over it again today and have a couple of questions. That doesn't mean you're going to have to make any major changes. I just want to see what -- have some questions about how it stands. But first, I'd like you to go through and let us know what -- if there were any major changes and what they are, or even minor changes.
Sure. Thank you Chair Rogers, members of the Planning Commission. Minor changes, we made a number of editing fixes, so punctuation errors, capitalization errors, spelling errors. On top of that, the only other change was a prioritization change, and that was based on feedback from the city council. And that was to move an update to the parking regulations, parking requirements up to a short-term project.
Okay, can you tell us where that is?
Sure. So if you jump in the plan, if you jump to page 31, you'll see the last item listed in short-term policy actions is update automobile parking requirements. Previously, that was listed as a long-term goal, but we got direction from council to prioritize things that would help the business community. And updating parking requirements is going to be one of the most important things for doing that. That's how we're going to get to infill development, expansion of existing businesses.
And so, how is that going to be accomplished?
So what we're doing right now is we're looking at ways to bring in additional staff, consulting help from people that are familiar with these sorts of projects. We've been working with Susan Bell to get her on contract. She's recently gone through these kinds of projects in Arlington. Jim, do you want to speak for that?
Yes, this is kind of focused expertise that we need. Ms. Bell was a department head and former zoning administrator prior to that, just did a re-study of the Arlington code and has put together a report. So we feel this, there's some expertise and insight that will be helpful to the city. That's going on to, I think, to their planning commission and will be going on to their county board. So being able to see what others are doing and what their situation is and bring that expertise to the city, I think, will be very valuable for us.
And will a report be the, what do you call it, the product of that evaluation?
We would be looking at a report with recommendations, and that would probably come before the planning commission and the city council for further review and ultimately action.
Question?
Yes.
Just to make sure, this is to update our parking requirements and code?
Take a look at our parking standards, how they relate to best practices now, how they relate to other jurisdictions. And also, we need to be looking at how parking is actually being used here in the city. So we now have some projects that we can evaluate, whether we have too much or not enough, and it'll involve, I think, doing some counting of what's out there, for example.
This is an absolute necessity because we keep being faced with this with every single project, and everybody just, oops, sorry about that, fussing all over the place about it. Any timeline as far as short-term?
Well, I think it's, the city manager's talking about it as part of a work plan update with council as we speak in the work session. So I have to see, but I would think summer and fall timeframe with maybe product actions in the spring.
Bring it on. We need it.
I have a couple of questions. First, I'd like to open it to, open this item to the public, and if you'd remain in case there are any questions of you, that would be great.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay. We do have one speaker slipped on this issue. Mr. Stevens?
Good evening. Yes?
I'm assuming that you've seen the plan and you're not looking forward to another slide presentation of it.
Oh, no.
Is that okay?
I've read all, what, 333 versions? Good evening, commission members. I'm Tim Stevens, and I'm chair, current chair of the Environmental Services Council, so I'm here on their behalf this evening to endorse the plan and urge you to support it as well. We view favorably the increased emphasis in this plan on walking and biking. And we're concerned, from an environmental standpoint, the harmful greenhouse gas emissions that come from traditional forms of transportation. And the more we can substitute walking and biking, the more we can do to improve our overall per capita greenhouse gas emission reductions here in the city. So in effect, the transportation plan becomes an important part of our overall environmental plan. So to conclude, we encourage you to adopt the plan and perhaps urge you to be, urge Mr. Stoddard and the planning staff to be even more bold and aggressive in coming up with plans for walking and biking in the city. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Stoddard, I do have a couple of questions. And one of them relates to some of the things Mr. Stevens was talking about. I noticed that we had comments from a variety of boards or commissions.
Yes.
And these were done the beginning of this year, some of them last month, some of them early in February. Are these things that have been taken into consideration as far as the changes are concerned in the plan?
Yes. So feedback on all those comments have been incorporated into the plan. Where it most often shows up is in the way different projects are defined. So if you look at, for example, the pedestrian facility standards, you'll see comments that were fed in from the Human Services Advisory Council, as well as the Greater Fairfax, the Fairfax Area Disability Services Board, in terms of incorporating ADA pieces in there, increasing the amount of street furniture, and other things like that. So where you'll see those comments fed in is in the individual project descriptions.
There were a couple of things that I was particularly interested in, and one of them was, this is from the HSAC, recommending that the plan address mobility needs of senior citizens. And I think that's really important. You know, we see extra parking places for handicapped, and we see for mothers with babies or pregnant women, but you never just see something for seniors who aren't handicapped but who could use a little help parking closer to a building. So I was glad to see that being brought up. And that was also brought up by the County Fairfax.
Yeah, that's the Fairfax Area Disability Services Board.
Right.
That includes Falls Churches.
Yes.
There's a Falls Church rep on that board. We had other things that spoke to senior mobility. We also had continued support for the Fair Wheels program, which is a discounted taxi cab program here. We had goals to look for places to incorporate taxi stands into future development projects, as well as, one thing you mentioned was handicap parking, was to assess whether the handicap parking requirements are really going to be sufficient for the city going forward.
And is there any possibility that we could also get something about senior parking?
Senior parking? We could certainly look into something like that.
Is it mentioned at all in our plan?
No, it is not.
I think it's something that we would want to encourage new development, new development to have, if possible. And I understand that you can't have somebody by the parking places checking people's driver's license for their age, but, you know, they don't do that for handicapped parking either, so. The other thing that I wanted to ask you about is the bus shelters. And the same group, the Fairfax Area Disability Services Board, said that they were concerned about the proposal to consolidate bus stops. This is something, as you know, when we went through that, I was concerned about that because I do think sometimes people won't walk an extra two blocks to get to a bus stop and take the bus. So I'm a little bit concerned about that, and I want to know if their comments were taken into consideration.
Yes. So there were protections against consolidating bus stops to the extent that would create a hardship. That was taken care of, that was addressed in the bus stop master plan.
Right.
The way we addressed it back then was by saying that before we consolidate, we have to post at the bus stops, we have to host a public meeting, and then it's administered by the CACT, and then we put it up to the CACT to decide, to try and, and the idea for that was to put it in sort of a staff board and commission review instead of a staff review. So that already exists in the bus stop master plan, and then in response to the disability board's comments, we reiterated that point inside the Mobility for All Modes Plan itself. So we stress the fact that it's important that you have to hold that public meeting before removing the bus stop.
Great. I'm finished with my questions and comments. Are there any other questions and comments of Mr. Stoddard? Lyndi?
Oh, you go.
You sure?
Sure. We'll go from right to left.
All right, just a quick question, and I think it's, this will be more Jim's question. Do you know if there's been any movement on getting the FTEs to implement this plan? I know the question came up during the council, the meeting that we had with the council, but I wanted to follow up on that question.
Well, I believe there are two CIP positions that are, Public Works will be getting to help implement projects, but those are primarily going to be focusing on capital improvement projects. How much of it's actually going to focus on this particular aspect of it, I don't know for sure. We had been looking at, seeing if we couldn't get some additional funding through this state revenue that we may get, and the answer on that, I think, is still unknown at this point. We do think, long-term, that having a ped bike coordinator, someone who can work on these specific issues, is something the city will need to consider because a person with those skills can begin to make real progress on all these issues. At least, that's been the pattern in other communities, that when you bring in someone who has those skills, you can begin to make real progress moving forward these projects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. You mentioned the fair rides, or the deal with the--
Yeah, Fair Wheels, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And I know a few years ago, we were having some problems with it, and we had a report coming in. Is it seems to be working all right now?
Yes, I've been checking with Housing and Human Services on that, and they seem pretty happy with the program. And they, it was one of their comments to me that they wanted to stress in the plan, continued support for that.
Yeah, because that was very important for mobility. Thank you.
Thank you, Lyndi. Melissa, or Andy? Okay, thank you. I know you've worked long and hard on this, long too, very long. And we appreciate all that, and we appreciate the comprehensive way that you've gone about presenting it to us, so we had lots of opportunities to comment and hear about the other groups who were participating in the update of the plan, because the transportation part of the comp plan is very important, not only now, but for future development. So, thank you very much, Mr. Stoddard.
Thank you.
I think this one had the most meetings with the public.
That's right. You won the award on the meetings with the public.
And presentations, you know, if you've attended those, you've seen those presentations quite often.
I would like to reiterate our pleasure with Mr. Stoddard's work on this effort. I think it's been, we've made a lot of progress. Also, you may want to congratulate him. He received his degree this Sunday.
Oh, congratulations.
Enjoying his core's work while also doing this work. And you have a copy, I think, of the draft work that we're going to work on next, the pedestrian, I'm sorry, the Parks and Recreation chapter of the comp plan. So we're trying to take these important pieces and move them forward. He'll be working on that soon. So I just wanted to thank you for your work on this as well, and congratulate Mr. Stoddard on his work and his recent degree.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Rankin?
Sure. I'd like to move passage of resolution adopting and recommending Mobility for All Modes as an update and replacement of the existing Transportation Chapter of the city's comprehensive plan.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve Mobility for All Modes as an update and replacement of the existing Transportation Chapter of the city's comprehensive plan. This is a recommendation. We approve it, and we're recommending that the city council approve it. So that would be final, the final step on this particular project. And Lyndi, you've seconded that, right?
Sure.
Okay. Ms. G., would you please call the roll? Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. John?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. We're going to move on to approval of the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes? Ms. Hockenberry?
Yeah, thank you. It's on line 296, and I think that amenities was meant to be incentives.
Okay.
That is. Thank you.
And on that same, in that same section where it says, "Ms. Hockenberry inquired about retail document," I'm not quite sure what that means. Do you remember exactly what? About the retail document?
Oh, that was moving forward, the, and we should put a title of it in there. That was the document, another plan that Mr. Snyder presented to us very quickly one evening. What was the name of that again?
This was a work session I had with the city council that they had asked us to do. We were looking at, moving forward, looking at retail.
Commercial and retail opportunities in Falls Church, looking ahead.
Right.
Looking ahead.
And I think that that should definitely go to the EDA, absolutely, because that's got to be coordinated effort.
I think this will show up on the work plan that the manager's working with council right now, too.
Okay. Thank you for pointing that out.
Do you have a title?
I saw that, I didn't mark it.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr.?
On 169, it says that-- 169, it says, "Mr. Snyder responded that one case was hoarding in a residential structure." Is it, is it true? Is it hoarding or is it boarding? I wasn't sure what it was.
We have, we have, we have a case that we're working on with, is severe hoarding situation.
Oh, yes, okay.
Yes.
So it's HOARDING?
HOARDING.
And then the last item, it's 763. It says that, "I abstained from the motion to adjourn," which is unusual, would be quite unusual. So--
Maybe because you were abstaining on another motion.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sure I wasn't hurrying to go home, too.
You abstained on the vote on the minutes.
Oh, was it on the vote on minutes? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
You abstained because you weren't here at the previous meeting for those minutes.
Oh, okay.
But nobody abstains on--
It says, yeah, adjournment, that's why.
When I make mistakes, they're usually whoppers, and that was a particularly long meeting. I don't know how you can say that.
Oh, we love when you're in it, love it.
All right, do you, anything else? Okay. I move that we-- Wait, I haven't said mine. No, I'm asking you for--
I have nothing.
No comments? Okay, I do have a couple. On line 54 to 61, where I, where I praised the staff, and it says, "I stated that I didn't want to hear any more complaints about staff." I don't think I had been, I meant staff. I think I meant about the process, the development process. I certainly can't imagine anyone complaining about staff. And then on line 286, you can tell that I've been reading what I say at these meetings. It said, "I note that I rarely hear ambulances in my neighborhood, although I seek the vehicles entering and leaving the area." And I just want you to know, I do not seek them, I only see them.
I am sure that by the time I finish describing this, I'm going to spell check, even though that doesn't work.
Well, yeah, that wouldn't have come up. That wouldn't have come up. And 359, this is for you, Mr. Rankin. "You expressed appreciation for the ten beds in the basket." Now, what is that?
Oh, the basket. He thought and didn't care.
I don't know what the word was, but there's ten, ten properties in the basket. It has to do with how they're going to assess the--
Okay, ten properties, okay.
I did see that.
He did.
I wasn't going to--
In future years, nobody--
Nobody would understand what that meant. Okay, so instead of saying ten beds in the basket, why don't we say ten properties in--
They were calling it a basket.
I know they were, but--
I wanted to call it a bucket, but--
You should call it a basket of concessions or--
Yeah.
Well, it was, it was the--
Baskets of properties.
It was the top 10 highest assessed--
So you're using the properties to determine the gross rate for the taxes and lieu thing? Okay. So it's definitely properties. The 10 properties in the basket of properties. I mean, because there, I just think people may be looking at these meetings a minute a little bit more closely because it's got all of the changes to the Kensington in it. That's true.
And that's why I included all of the voluntary concessions.
Yeah, that was a good idea, yeah. I'm pleased.
That was good because we'd not seen them in writing. Had seen them in writing, but we had not seen them printed up. I cracked it myself.
So given the meeting, you made very few mistakes. Okay, Melissa, now it's your turn.
I move that we adopt the minutes as amended.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the minutes, or approve the minutes as amended. All of them, sorry. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to planning commissioner reports. Ms. Hockenberry?
The only one that I can remember, well, there's a couple of things. Did attend the EDA as, you know, I stated in the last meeting and encouraged them to look for, you know, ways of incentivizing, you know, for businesses to come in. The other meeting that I went to was the Roberts Park meeting on what the neighborhood park and what the city wants to do with it, and having a conversation with the people who lived around it. And it was a pretty hotly contended, contended meeting. And the whole thing was, is to purchase a property to have better access into the park, and it was something we've been having on the, with the Parks and Recs and Open Space Committee for a long time, looking for a property to purchase. And it's on Lynn Place, which is a perfect place because it's also the entrance to Roberts Park. And so, I know that's still in the working, and I think it was very good in the fact that the neighborhood got to complain that really the policing was not being done to make sure that curfews were met and no extended long into midnight parties or midnight soccer going on. So I think that part got across, and hopefully we can cooperate in getting something to go so that they would more understand that it is a neighborhood park and not just their backyard. So it was very important. And that is an all-city park, too.
Any other reports? Okay, we will then move on to planning director's report. Mr. Snyder?
Thank you, Chairman Rogers, members of the commission. We, I did want to mention, as you look at the agenda, the number 11, the adjournment that's mentioned, and session to go cover Broad and West that's not scheduled at this time. They've redesigned, they're going through a redesign, a rethinking, and so when it is time, we'll, we'll have that session, but at this point, it's not ready. We have been working on the downtown plan. I made a presentation to the economic, the EDA the other evening, and they were positive, I think, about the plan. We are looking to have it in front of the city council on June 23rd. That means we would like to have it to the commission no later than the 16th of June. So that's also the evening. I think you have your kickoff work session on Parks and Recreation. We're going to be, I'm going to be presenting to the Chamber of Commerce, their legislative committee, on Friday, May 30th. So we're, we're trying to make the rounds of all the various commissions and committees. And we'll be talking to them as the Parks and Recreation Board on Wednesday, June 4th, along with talking to them about the Parks and Recreation Chapter. So one of our goals is to bring that to closure. One of my questions to the commission is, are there additional, do you want additional time to talk about the plan in advance of it coming to hearing before you on, say, the 16th of June?
I would think so. I mean, but I'm not speaking for the entire board. I would like to see it prior to having to vote on it.
Okay. So possibly a work session, for example, possibly on--
Yeah, I mean, it's not a long plan, so we should be able to go through it quickly, but it would be good to, maybe we could--
So possibly June--
Maybe we could even sit in on the Park and Recs?
Well, we could do something on June 2nd, for example. That's a fairly light agenda. So we could have a work session, then look for action on the 16th with hopefully approval by the city council on the 23rd of June.
Good.
We, we have been working on, seeing if we can't find time and a place for kicking off the Area 6, the West Broad Street, plan. And Deborah G. has been working on trying to find us a location and a time. I think, Deborah, you mentioned we may be looking--
We had been looking, hopefully before school got out, but I was having difficulty finding a space within the study area. So again, we'll meet at Columbia Baptist Church on Saturday, the 21st of June.
Okay.
We had been trying to do something at St. James', but that did not work out.
Oh, okay.
And we've spent a lot of time, some of you who've been, particularly Chair Rogers, with the effort in, on the schools, schools, city property. There was a piece put together that went to city council with kind of a roadmap of process for dealing with that area. We are looking at having a technical advisory panel from Urban Land Institute and Council of Government-- Council of Governments to help us in the fall to look at that area. So that's a fall-winter kind of project that'll be important. That's about all I have at this time. We are, we are keeping track of the split lot issue. We've had continuing some properties on Lincoln, but there's been a certain amount of activity, but it's not huge volume. So we're continuing to track that.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Any questions? Melissa?
So, I'm just, I guess on the Northwest project, which we're not going to have the work session on tonight. So I'm hearing that this redesign of the plan is going to replace a lot of the apartments with condos. Is that what the redesign is?
What we've heard is there is interest in, in doing a, about a 55-unit condominium on Park Avenue side, as opposed to another wing of the apartments. And there was a lack of enthusiasm, I guess, about the idea of two single-family houses on Park.
No, I definitely had the lack. I was actually hoping they'd just use it for green space or something. I guess my issue is I'd like the idea of the small apartments, I mean, oriented to people who ride bikes and all that stuff. But if they do condos, are we talking about two and three-bedroom condos? Because to me, I'd rather stay with this project concept, with maybe more retail somewhere and the apartments move over and we get more retail on the other corners or something. Or, I mean, they don't, I don't know if they have enough parking for another 55 condos.
Well, I think one of the, there, there was going to be, I believe, a wing of the apartment building in that area.
Right.
So it's a redesign. We have not seen it all detailed out. And I think that's one of the things that we're waiting on is a more detailed resubmission of what it will actually look like.
Okay.
There are a lot of rental apartments proposed in the original plan. There is some thinking that some homeownership or possibly some options for people to downsize from single-family houses into an ownership position, that there may be a market for a smallish condominium. We're hearing some of that in the marketplace, that I think all of the condo units were sold, for example, finally at Spectrum.
Right. But those are, those are some fairly large condos and that, there's some small ones in the mix as well. But I just, you know, until I see Pearson Go condo and be sold, I'm just leery of putting more condos in our market right now.
Again, we're, we're waiting to see a more detailed plan. We have not seen that yet. But it's a concept we're hearing about. And Chair Rogers may have heard some of this at an EDC meeting where some of this was talked about, but still a work in progress, if you will.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't even seen any drawings on it.
No, we haven't either. So, I think they also were looking at not having the drugstore be an anchor and they were looking at some other options of-
Right. I heard that, yeah, the drugstore was going to be the anchor. But, okay.
Yeah. I was wondering for update about the traffic light on Pennsylvania.
It's working along. I, I don't know all the details on that. I did want to mention, we did hear that Kirsten Muntz is going to be taking possession with Fairfax County. And a loss for the city. She's been a very excellent engineer and made a lot of progress on a lot of projects. So I wanted to let you all know about that so we can let her know how much we appreciated her work.
She did very good work. And my other question, I know I'm going to be a bug about this, but I'd like to still request a listing of coverage of the, probably for the last year of single-family homes, height and coverage.
Okay.
Okay.
When's Kirsten's last day? Or is she already?
I'll have to get back to you on that. I did hear a date, but I'm not absolutely certain of the date. But I'll get back to you on that. Kirsten, Kirsten's last day.
Anything, any other questions, Mr. Snyder? Well, then I think we can, since we're not going into a work session, we can really adjourn. If I had a motion, I would consider it.
Move to adjourn.
Any second?
I second.
It's been moved by Mr. Rankin and seconded by Mr. John, that we adjourn. And I agree. Hope everyone else does.
We agree on paper, yes.
Yes.